Last turn then back to Bellingham and then just for Christmas.
To the flag United States of America, to the public which stands one nation under God.
Roll call please. Mr. Brandon. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Hurney.
Here.
Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Nimmick.
Here.
We have got five of the six costumes present. We have a forum. We have a meeting. Uh, the governor's proclamation is still in effect. This meeting is being broadcast remote. However, we do not have any trustees attending remotely this evening. Therefore, all the votes unless stated by state statute will be voiced. We'll use the roll call. Only non those who said that are required. Uh. What else we got here? Uh, minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of February sixth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thor, seconded by Deatley. Any comments, questions about, actually, any additions or deletions for the minutes? Not on discussion. No. I see no heads moving in the direction of changes or additions. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion so carries. Thank you all. Next item is the president's report. On. Rebuttorial proclamation, as I said, once again is in effect. We go from there. Uh, the other item uh this evening is the request from Chief Karma for the appointment of another FOIA or Freedom of Information Officer for the Police Department. And I would like to make that appointment be Becky. Is our other to join Sergeant Wilson. On Freeman's Becky's last.
Becky Freeman, yep.
So if I could have a motion to move the appointment of Becky Freeman to the second Freedom of Information Officer for the Police Department.
So. Okay, second.
Moved by Ernie and seconded by Thor. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? The motion so carries. Thank you all. Okay, uh, president's report. That is it for the time being. We have a comment or two. Other items this evening, but my report is done. Clerk's report. The only thing I have to report tonight is that the Office of the Secretary of State has accepted our renewal for the village logo for another five years. So the logo is ours uh considered as a reference mark uh been used as a trademark. You know, that is good until the fifteen twenty. Six, uh, whatever.
Eight.
Years, eight or twenty-seven, twenty-eight, March twenty-eight uh. So yeah, it's here for ours to use as we think of it. According to the law. Okay, that was all I have. Uh, man, that is so appropriate, endless. It's like you didn't suggest that of the clerk. No, 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 the clerk keeps things on the task here. I think. Okay, thank you, Tony. Planning and zoning. Uh, there's no report from P and Z this evening. They do have a meeting planned for Monday the twenty-seventh. Uh, was a continuation of their one from. See if I do the calendar. Yeah, it would have been.
January twenty-third.
January twenty-third. Okay. Thank you. Uh, attorney, there's no attorney report this evening. Engineers, uh, I hope you all had time to digest the uh engineers' report this evening. There will be a test on it. Okay, uh, finance, your financial report.
Request a motion for the approval of the accounts payable in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand forty dollars and forty-eight cents. So move the athlete.
Second, Thor.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Thor to approve the warrants of, oh, I'm on the wrong list. Sorry about that. Lost. Okay, one hundred and twenty-two thousand forty dollars and forty-eight cents. Excuse me while the president tries to find his back in the. It is. Okay, moved by the athlete, seconded by Thor to approve the warrants in one hundred and twenty-two thousand forty dollars and forty-eight cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, or questions? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Hurney.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
More affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so carries. Thank you all.
The second item I have maybe somewhat of a moot point.
That was the four twenty-four rainbow. We can scratch that.
Yeah.
That Ms. Detmer took care of that for us. I, it was a placeholder on her district.
It's the right hand not knowing what the left hand was doing.
Right. And it happened at that time when we had an agenda coming out and it's a handy place to keep a reminder.
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Eugene. Uh, one thing moving on before we go into the public comment section. Uh, in the finance, you all got the January expense report. Well, that's nine months into our budget, seventy-five percent. Our revenues are looking at about a hundred and ten percent at this point. So we're doing real good on the revenue side of it. Uh, expense wise, once again, we're doing really good down through there. You go through uh each of the department's administration. Uh, Eugene's got his budget down, locked down and tight. Uh, we're right about seventy, seventy-two, thirty percent on most of the items. The chief has the police department locked down tight. He's running his budget about seventy-two, seventy-three percent. And Kyle has the Public Works Department locked down. He's running that. Uh, he's got one that really jumped up there on him, but overall his budget is running right about seventy percent of a lot of budgets. So, you know, we're really on target on that. And I just want to let everybody know that, you know, where the rest of the staff while we're snoozing is keeping an eye on things.
You know, I can give an update on the copier. Um, I got in contact with Skylar. We got in contact with Toshiba and we are able to purchase for cash. So that'll save us a thousand dollars. And uh, we've got the purchase order going through so we can get that as soon as possible.
Okay.
So actually, it kind of comes under the gene thing. Just while you're thinking about saving money, I was talking to Kyle today about, or yesterday about the water main break on deer. But we were talking about the trailer that was purchased a few years ago to haul around to get things from Camp McCoy. I said, so what do you do with that? He goes, the stuff in the cold storage sits on it. Why? Because there's no place else to put it. So that may be a form of discussion of selling that trailer and that gulf that you saw on it because he has no use for it. The only use for it was hauling around the lawnmower, which we've never used it for in the four, five, six years we've had it. The trailer that we bought for.
I know the trial. I'm trying to think what the weight.
Not enough for a mini excavator.
Okay, that's what I was.
I.
You guys.
I already was already entered in that. So it's hard to kind of buy that because he expressed that. He said, it's just a pain in his neck just to have it sit there in the cold storage. He has to put stuff on top of it to make room. So.
Once, and then once we get the uh the new copier, we can probably put the old copier on the deal suit.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's funny. It's better than tossing it in the garbage.
Yeah.
You know, I'm gonna just get a dollar for it. It's just, you know, it's finding good use for it.
You put it on the trailer.
No, I, you know, I mean, it's. Right, right. Yeah.
Well, except for the cotton. That keeps getting used. Everybody takes stuff off of it.
Yeah.
But no, that's, I forgot about that trailer back there. But yeah.
We bought that just for the express purpose points, you know, that we got for the generators and stuff like that, all the stuff we got, so.
And, but we don't have the use for it. It's not going to be big enough to haul an excavator.
That's what Kyle had said. So we should talk to Kyle about that because he would be, and that's once again, I think it's the left hand. I'm talking the right hand. He's like, I don't need it, but nobody else, you know. It's like, not mine. So.
Okay. All right. Uh, anything else on the finance?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, then uh, commenting the public. You're not, no, they're right. He's, we've already had our conversations. Uh, okay, trustees report. Words in parks on Mr. Hurney.
And if you haven't noticed, that would be hard not to notice, the buyers of this Apatina park equipment came in on fairly short notice and picked the main park equipment up on Saturday. Uh, they showed them with the nine men, three trailers and a huge bauk gap. Um, it took them a little longer than they anticipated, but they did get it removed. They took about eighty percent of the concrete with them. The concrete that remains, Kyle said he'll be able to take care of that and remove it with no problem. We may have to contract out to smooth the park out a little bit before delivery of the new. I double checked with the supplier with Playground Illinois and was told the trucking firm will pick the uh the new equipment up on the twenty-first of April. And it will be uh erected a few days thereafter. They're hoping to be here Monday thereafter uh no later than Tuesday. The idea being the installers will meet the truck and load it uh at that time, which the head of the problem that probably won't occur um if they deliver that equipment and the installer is delayed for for any reason, uh, we might have a problem. So to head that off, uh, I'd like to make a motion and I would like to appoint an individual here this evening to camp out and possibly sleep with that to make to prevent theft or any sort of problem. And so I would make that motion. As I said, I would hope for a quick second. No discussion left. When that person, I think, should be our honorable floor clerk. By, by voice vote, including members of the audience.
Including members of the audience.
Please, doesn't anyone say aye?
You have, you have, I got a lot by after hours charge. Oh, they're, they're lengthy and expensive.
Was, I don't know, we have two hundred, but, you know, West Dundee at Graffman, that equipment was there for about a month to sit outside all boxed up and they did have security, I shouldn't say it, like snow fencing that around it, but it seemed like it was awfully big to anybody cart away, so.
Well, when is it not sitting out there?
Yeah, but I mean, I said, I don't, yeah, I don't think it'd be an issue.
Well, we stored up around the administration building here.
We could, yeah, in case of rainy weather or so.
Yeah.
That's what we'd have to do.
Cold storage?
Yeah.
Yeah. And put it on the trailer.
No, all trailers going on, God, we don't want them buying the trailer of all this.
Uh, that's all I have to report. Other than if you haven't met Ms. Court Bebeau, I think there's about a hundred percent chance she'll be sitting up your. That's all I have to report.
All right.
Thank you. To say, hey, I got it to the playground. Um, I did contact Gov Deals and I marked it that they picked it up, so they should release the fund source now.
Yeah, thank you for your help on.
Yeah, no, this.
Project group. We started from how are we going to get it out of there? To, well, let's, you know, get a buck for it.
They're getting paid.
I'm just thinking Steve went way back. All the hoops we used to go through trying to get our squad car, putting it in the paper and putting out for bids and Orin sitting here with reading the bids off to us and then not, you know, except one and they didn't pick it up and the whole and the bottom money spent for advertising. It's like such a seamless process. Thank you. Thank you, Eugene.
Yeah, the old days, uh, something else. Then it'd be somebody from Pennsylvania. Somebody that's, show them, buy the squad cars for taxes.
Yeah, it was.
Strange. Okay, uh, moving on, finance. Uh, there's not much to report. There was a finance committee meeting earlier this week, like yesterday in this room. Uh, and that group has done a lot of work, got a lot uh moving forward. Uh, we will be going into an executive session later this evening for personnel. So I'll give you a little bit more of an update of that situation on there. Uh, other than that, we'll move on to a water and sewer with Mr. Nimmick.
I would like to say this is the longest motion I've ever made, but I'm pretty sure it's not. So, and I do have a copy here to give Tony. So after, as I would give you a little brief, uh, we had that we've been dealing with for two years now. We have the, I, I'll call it the I E P A improvement fee that we paid to West Dundee now with the new sewer agreement. Uh, it's basically based on our capacity. So I talked to Eugene and he figured an increase of a dollar sixty-five would per thousand gallons would cover that. We adjusted the flat rate. So I'd like to uh move that we change the sewer fee to eleven dollars per thousand gallons um to cover the West Dundee to West Dundee I E P improvement fee and increase the flat rate to seventy-five dollars effective June first because of the ordinance remark and then we gotta wait thirty days. So does that give you enough time, Eugene, just to give ourselves a month buffer? Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, I have the math here for the uh, the flat rate for now. Let's see it. Modify the village code for the sewer rate to mirror the water rate verbiage, which is the water rate. Um, water rate change is effective after January first, twenty twenty-four will be determined by the village president and the board of trustees. Side note, we do not need to have the rate increases for the water and sewer in the code. So it'll save us the cost of the complication and fees. It'll just be basically a voice vote and then finance committee will take care of that. So, and this, we already does a water. So we're doing it sore now. Uh, Eugene, I noticed there's an inconsistency in the charges, so it'll modify six, three, twelve and six, four, A dash four to be consistently so in the village code. And modify the village code to require all plate flat rate customers. I told you this wasn't the longest. I've done longer. Customers have a meter, water meter installed as required by the what new West Dundee sewer agreement before April first, twenty twenty-five. And the flat rate sewer charge will expire when all meters are installed. So if they're installed that you cannot get a new one or that is that can be an option, which is required by the agreement. So they will be billed by their sewer, by their water usage. That's all I have. Waiting for a second now.
If you dare.
I al- I almost asked him to repeat it.
You're gonna make me repeat. Okay, moved by Mr. Nimmick, seconded by Mr. Hurney. Or was it Deatley? Mr. Deatley. To let's see how we're gonna get this.
The ordinance is red.
Okay, to change the sewer fee to eleven dollars per thousand gallons, which is an increase of a dollar sixty-five over the current nine thirty-five and make the flat rate up to seventy-five dollars from, was it sixty-seven?
Sixty-seven, seventy-seven, something like that.
Fifty now, effective with the July first, two thousand twenty-three bill. All of this goes into this?
I could have made four motions, but it seems simpler and voting all these times. That's just the.
Tell you what, you modify your code.
Yeah.
Okay, but if we cheat in it, the next is this next one modify the village code for the sewer rate? That's part of the mod.
Yes, yeah.
Any rate?
Yes, yes. Right, because that'll, that'll take out the sewer rate out of the village code and just make it in the table. It feeds us everything else of what.
Just out of simplicity, Joe, can we make these four separate? Or two separate?
I think that's just easy for Mark to be. It's all tied in together. It's all, it's all gonna be in the same ordinance.
Then how about we have any comments, comment of discussion concerning the motion to change the sewer fees to eleven dollars per thousand and the method in which the rate is determined in the future? To match the rates of water sources. Is that what you're saying, Joe?
No, there's several things that are happening.
Yeah.
There's, there's all it has to be in there. It's all, that's.
Okay.
It's all the bold stuff. It's all the bold stuff, Stephen.
All right. Change the sewer fee to eleven dollars per thousand gallons and adjust flat rate fee to seventy-five dollars effective June first, twenty-three. I take all this math as just the.
That's just the math, aren't we? But it actually has.
Modify the village code for the sewer rate to mirror the water rate verbiage. Point number three, any rate changes effective after January twenty-four, January first, twenty-four will be determined by the village president and the board of trustees. Item number five, fourth, is modify section six dash three dash twelve and section six dash four, A dash four to be consistent with each other. And the fifth and last point is to modify the village code to require all flat rate, flat sewer rate users having a water meter installed as required by the new West Dundee agreement before April first, twenty twenty-five, and the flat sewer charge will expire when all meters are installed.
That could, Eugene? That's what we talked about, right?
The only thing I think is the agreement with West Dundee gives us five.
Five years of.
Eugene, I talked about that.
We talked about it too.
Yeah.
It, but the, the agreement though technically gives us five.
And that's why it's in parentheses there. The words, those words in there.
Oh, no.
You see that, see the way it's, it's in parentheses and you see where it's in the sentence there it is. So it doesn't.
Well, okay, yeah. West Dundee, it will be four years ahead of West Dundee's.
Well, it should probably be more than that. We're hoping to do it here. Meters are six months out. We're hoping to do it within fiscal year.
Right. The finance committee, I discussed it yesterday, so.
Yeah, we can do seven now and then we have to wait for the other ten.
At least get that thing started. Yeah, good. Okay, any other kind of discussion on this? Motion. If not, since we're changing uh fees within uh water sewer districts, let's do this by roll call. And the motion is by Nimmick and seconded by Mr. Dattley. Correct?
Correct.
Mr. Nimmick.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hurney.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Four affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion so carries. Thank you, Joe. Yeah, thank you, Joe.
That's why Tony should say thank you. Yeah, I think it's gonna make seven motions. We've been here all night voting, voting by the sand. So and it all tied in together. I mean, it'll be the same ordinance that Mark.
They'll bring the rest of it next meeting.
Well, you should see, Eugene and I were talking about it. It's the wrong shit. What are we charging for sewer? Eugene, right, like, it's not what it says in front of me. It's two separate rates in the village code.
Exactly. I looked at it in one place and it said the nine thirty-five. You looked at it in a different place and it said eight fifty or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Uh, the only thing I have to report is I talked to Justin, keep me updated on the water project. He's at the point where he's almost eighty-five percent with the, done with the engineering. Um, he is almost ready to submit that to I E P A. He'd actually like to have a face to face with them ahead of time because he said he's had more success with that. Uh, he needs to know pretty soon if, if and when we're gonna do any of the Hillcrest project, what are those other monies that we're gonna get from Suzanne Ness or otherwise what we have. So we have to just say, yeah, we're gonna do it or not gonna do it and then submit it. So, because we're you know, in that cycle, you can submit it mid-cycle, but you kind of want to be at the beginning of that because we could still be one or two or three years out of getting funding for that.
I, I contacted Deco and basically the nice little gesture by Suzanne Ness is a victory.
Okay. So it is, so, okay.
Yeah, oh, it's, it's, the state hasn't released the money so that we can give it out. So they tell the representatives, oh, you can get this money out, but the state never releases the money. So it's just them trying to buy goodwill with nothing. So all we've got is the ARPA money. We've got about forty thousand of the ARPA money that we can get away.
So talk to Mr. Steele about that and let him know, is that the money we've been using to pay for the engineering on this too, or is that?
No, I, I, we've been just paying the engineering out of our, our regular budget.
Oh, we have? Okay, because that was the first consideration that we didn't have the money for that. So, so talk to Mr. Steele, tell him what the number is. He can figure that out because he was saying that the bidding process is different and it's cheaper and easier. So if he can take that out of it, he can put that out to bid, get some good prices on it and then submit the other one to I E P A. So I will leave, leave that, you know, I'm gonna talk to Mr. Steele tomorrow and let him know what, what the numbers are. On Thursday. Or Thursday. He's not gonna be here anymore. You're not gonna be here tomorrow. Take him there. I, I, you know, didn't you just have a day on last?
Here's designated holiday.
So it's your convenience, give Mr., Mr. David, that's how I do. Wait, give this, give him the call, let him know the numbers and he can probably have the numbers for us to vote in at the next meeting. So that, as that would. And he was just to give us the board an idea, say, just for a number, say, we come up with four million dollars improvements. Go to the state. It, it all depends on who else has submitted, what the feeling is. They may say yay, nay, you're number one for next year, you're number one for next year. You know, that it's kind of in the pipeline then. He goes, they may just go, well, we'll give you two million of the four million. So you choose how much that you want to use. So, you know, it's not a guarantee, but we're probably still ways out, but the quicker we could go in on this, the.
Well, I have the idea. Well, I knew this was gonna be almost a two to three year issue.
Right.
And we are, what, eight, nine months into it now?
Oh, at least, so.
I was gonna say, it was just last April, May.
Seriously, no, but make, Jeff, we've been, we've been talking about that, that this has been falling apart for years now. So he's been eyeing it, so.
So.
That's all I have. Any questions? You know, we had another water main break on deer. He's also looking at end phase two of the improvements because he thinks that that section from Rainbow up to the curve seems to be a problematic section. So doesn't know the history. He's been talking to Kyle about that. Maybe another one of these used. What, I'm at Rainbow Joy, sorry. I always get those two mixed up. Joy Rainbow is a pretty happy thing. Yeah.
You got me confused.
Yeah, I did that all the time. From Joy, from Joy Deer, that first section there.
Pony in his hair.
Yeah. That may be another problematic section that may be, but it says too late to include it in this part of the project. So. That's all I have. Any questions?
Well. Okay, thank you, Joe. Uh, please send public safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, I don't have anything tonight. I will yield some time to the chief to talk a little bit about our award for special Olympics. At the Kent County Chiefs meeting, they uh this, this past week, they handed out the awards for special Olympics for the torch run, the Mount Ivory race. So I'll be, I'm gonna move, I think I'm gonna move our flags from an interior wall to our lobby so that people can actually see them on the end of the police department. Um, so moving that, but we raised last year, we raised five thousand and twenty-five dollars. We're hoping, uh, we're hoping to exceed that amount again this year. Great work.
A lot of effort goes into that. Yeah, it's, went a lot of time in meeting with those people.
Yeah, I will have our officer doing the polar plunge uh in Carpentville. Next Friday, I'll be doing my own plunge, but it'll be in. That's all I have today.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Thank you, chief. Uh, building and environment.
No report, Mr. President?
Uh, building and zoning enforcement, Mr. Perrino. Mr. Perrino is not with us this evening and there is no report. We move into old business. New old business to come before the board. There's no old business this evening. We move to new business. Uh, under new business, we have got review and approval of the draft two thousand and three spring. Has the board had a chance to uh review it?
Yes.
Yes.
I did read it.
Do we have a motion to say it's okay and move forward?
I move to approve the new sub.
Second line.
Moved by Thor and seconded by Hurney to approve the newsletter as presented. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion so carries. Thank you all. Uh, I do have to call a executive session for personnel according to section two C. Uh. Uh. Two. Three, one, one. No, it's not correct, the party, for personnel, it's one, and then. Oh, it, okay, personnel, yeah, is one, okay, so, that's right. Section two, C, one, for personnel, executive session, so I have a motion to uh, adjourn to executive session.
So move the atly.
Second.
Moved by Deatley, seconded by Nemic to adjourn to executive session, uh, that requires a roll call. Mr. Deatley.
Aye.
Mr. Ernie.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Nemic.
Aye.
We have four affirmative votes and no negative votes, we are moving into executive session. Okay. Mr. Court, we'll see you at another time. Thanks for coming in. If you still want to get.
Would we, you, you want to move there?
I've got a five o'clock point.
About a little over clock, one o'clock, sounds good, very thanks.
Man, thanks, John.
Mr. President, you ought to make the announcement about, uh, uh, coming back to our executive session.
Yep. Okay, we are adjourning into executive session at this point. Uh, we will not be coming back to the YouTube recording, because, once we move to executive session, we have to shut that down. And if we came back, it would be a second program, it wouldn't, you know, we just, it wouldn't be seen by. But since we are not going to have any action taken on the executive session, uh, we'll just, you know, come back to regular session anyhow. So with that, what we're gonna do is just cut off the YouTube at this point.